Here.
Ms. Shulist?
Here.
Mr. McDonald?
Present.
Mr. Callie? Mr. Pape?
Present.
Ms. Senyard?
Thank you, Ms. Bruce, if you will join me in tonight's prayer and pledge. For God, we thank you for the wonderful spring weather that we're having. We ask and call on you tonight to give us your wisdom and knowledge and to help us to make sound, clear decisions. We thank you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic whose religious hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we, can I call for a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Question to approve? Second.
Mayor Anderson and Ms. Williams? Do we have any citizens' comments tonight?
Could you?
None.
Thank you. Tonight, we don't have any existing business. We'll go straight to new business. Item number one, PC Resolution, PC 0624, amended final plat Belvoir subdivision Phase 1A, amending proposed right-of-way and lot design, map 21, parcels 62 and 63, property owners Northwest Cove LLC. Do I have a motion to discuss tonight's?
Motion to approve?
We have a second?
Second.
Mayor Anderson and Ms. Shulist? Staff, do you wish to give us your report?
Yes, our staff report for this project, Allison Corolla with T-Squared Engineering, has submitted on behalf of Tony Cavender a revised final plat for Phase 1A of the Belvoir development. Phase 1A contains 16 single-family residential lots, one open space, and a parcel for Water Authority of Dixon County Pump Station, and the dedication of right-of-way for the future realignment of Northwest Highway. Phase 1A is located on a portion of two tracts of land, tax map 021, parcels 62 and 63, and both parcel 63 is zoned R20, parcel 62 is zoned R40. The total acreage is 38.8 acres with Phase 1A covering 16.95 acres. No portion of the property is located within a flood hazard area as indicated on the FEMA firm panels. A final plat for Belvoir Phase 1A was submitted in July 2022 and was approved in December of 2022. The original plat contained 16 family residential lots, a parcel for Water Authority Dixon County Pump Station, and the dedication of right-of-way for the future realignment of Northwest Highway. The revised final plat submitted on February 27, 2024 maintains the 16 single-family residential lots, a parcel for Water Authority of Dixon County Pump Station, and the dedication of right-of-way for the future realignment of Northwest Highway. The revision includes the original lot 127 being converted to an open space area and the original lot 112 being subdivided into two smaller lots. Also, the location of the Northwest Highway realignment dedication has changed, both in its overall geometry and at the location of the intersection with Northwest Highway at the southeast corner of Phase 1A. Staff recommends the planning commission approve the Belvoir Phase 1A revised final plat in order to create the 16 single-family lots, one open space, one parcel for Water Authority Dixon County Pump Station, and a dedication of right-of-way for the future Northwest Highway realignment as submitted on February 27, 2024, with the following conditions of approval included in Resolution PC 0624. Prior to the recording of any final plat for additional phases 1B, 2, etc., right-of-way for the proposed Northwest Highway realignment shall maintain the original Belvoir subdivision final plat Phase 1A proposed right-of-way along the eastern property boundary and the proposed right-of-way included in the amended Belvoir subdivision final plat Phase 1A along the eastern property boundary. And all staff comments are to be addressed prior to the recording of the final plat.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Do we have any representatives from the, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. I'm Allison Corolla from T-Squared Engineering, and we're located at 1329 West Main Street in Franklin. I am here to answer any questions that you guys may have. I will say I do have hard copies with me tonight that address all of staff's comments. We've been in conversation with staff throughout the day, and so we have addressed all of those.
Okay, thank you. We'll open it up for additional discussion. Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so first, I'd like to point out, the top two lots that have been divided are still .89 acres apiece. So that is still in compliance with the zoning of that property. And I have been speaking with Mr. Johnny McDaniel for approximately a year now and have listened to his concerns and the concerns of the people who live in that area. So this, I feel, is a win-win for the community, Mr. McDaniel and the citizens' concerns. Mr. McDaniel, if the chair would accept, I would like to, if you're okay with this, let Mr. McDaniel speak.
Just need a motion to waive the rules, and if it's seconded and the majority approves, then we can waive the rules and we can have a citizen speak.
We have a motion to amend tonight's procedures?
I make a motion to amend.
Second.
Mayor Anderson, would you like to then call up a citizen comment?
Mr. McDaniel, would you please come forward, state your name and address, and just let the board know a little bit about what we've spoken about over the past year in regards to your property in this development?
Okay, yes, I'm Johnny McDaniel. It's 7273 Northwest Highway. I'm in the turn there where it's a right angle at the lot. And over the last long time, more than a year, like Mayor says, when I became aware of what was going on there, of course, I had some questions and concerns. And the one thing that had alarmed me initially about the thing is not the development, let me go ahead and say, I think that development's a good thing if it's done properly. And these are going to be very nice houses. Mine, I went out on a limb and built what I considered a nice house, all I could afford 30 years ago or so on that lot. And these houses are going to be nicer than mine, I'm sure. And yet, I think they'll upgrade not just the area, but Fairview, make it easier to sell nice homes, make it a more desirable place for any homes, probably, when you get some nice properties set aside like they're doing there in the development. But the one thing that did concern me was that they were gonna initially, I guess some plans were being considered that would have taken off, well, I don't know exactly, maybe 20, 25 feet of the front of my lot that was thoughtfully and rather extensively landscaped for the type home I have. And it really, in our eyes, kind of defined the character of the residence. And I just thought that it was unnecessary because initially, when they had widened the road out there, they had said that they wanted to reduce the curve there some. Well, instead, they went the other way and took part of the easement in front of my property and actually sharpened the curve. I thought that was rather odd, but water under the bridge, that's what happened. But this time, I was mindful of the fact that that curve, if anything, did need shortening. And if they were gonna go and widen it on either side, it should be on the side across the street from my lot, which is an open field, cow pasture. And, you know, with a little buffer zone even between the road and the fence, 10 feet, 15 feet, I don't know. But they had plenty of room that way, and it also would have taken the road straighter and allowed it to turn slower rather than turn sharper and have to double back like going in front of my property would have. Just made more sense from a planning, from a safety, and of course, respecting developed property rather than just open land, so to speak, exactly what we were talking about. Well, I had mentioned that to the mayor, and she thought it made sense, and we went on from there, just hoping we'd come to some sort of resolution. And the way I understand it, they've got a three-way stop planned there now that will not actually widen the road, but will address the safety and the traffic concerns coming in and out of the development and in front of the house and in that sharp turn, a stop. So that's fine with me. That's wonderful. Doing it that way, really, as I understand it, doesn't even encroach upon my property and still serves the purpose of the city and the development for safety and considerations of more traffic. And so, in that regard, I have to be, if all that's true, which I here assume it is, then I have to be thankful for those plans being modified to what I consider a better idea for all concerned and alleviating a concern I had that had really troubled me.
Sir, if I can interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
Typically, we reserve three minutes for public comments. I'll give you, you know, a little bit of time to wrap up.
Yeah, I don't need much. That's almost through. But, you know, with that, if those are the plans, and that's what I've been notified informally that those were the plans. But I have to be appreciative and supportive and glad the process has played out the way it has without any undue friction or attempts at reversals or anything like that on my part. So it looks like a great thing for everybody involved, if those are the facts as I understand them. And I'm just here to let everybody know that that sort of proceeding would not only make me very happy, but I think it would serve the needs of everybody. And even Tony had stopped by my house, a developer, today and told me that he was happy about the way things had transpired, and he had to modify his plans there a little bit with the lot. But he said, no, no problem. He just wanted it to turn out like it should. And so I have to appreciate, appreciate in that sense, everyone involved.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mayor?
Okay, so after, after long conversations with Mr. McDaniel and several citizens along that stretch, that were worried about such a long stretch of road with no break in it, these stop signs will stop people from, you know, getting speed up and hitting this curve, which is a good thing. And then we are, the right-of-way is still being deeded to the city and keep, you know, it's keeping in the, you know, our future plans. Also, being a win-win, you know, listening to the citizens and their concerns, I believe Tony Cavender, I went to him with these concerns. I believe that he did a good job in, you know, an alternate plan did not increase in lots. There's no lot that doesn't meet the zoning. And then that was expressed to Mr. Greer. Mr. Greer then reached out. We found out that Ms. Senyard was, this is, and also the special called meeting, this is in a, you know, has to be done in a timely manner because there are closings coming up in the next few days. So that's why the special called meeting. But Ms. Senyard wasn't able to be here tonight. She had prior engagement. So I appreciate Mr. Greer reaching out to Mr. Magnner here and asking him to, as the vice chair, to sit in for Ms. Senyard tonight. And I just, you know, I appreciate them getting this scheduled because I do believe that this is a good plan for our community. I think it's always a good plan to listen to the citizens. And, you know, if there's some way that we can make it safer and, you know, not impede on their property, this is now going to be all on the development property. So I just, I see that this is a positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments, questions from the?
Yes, Mr. Magnner, if I may?
Yes, Mr. McDonald?
My first question was regarding this, since it is a special meeting called, was what the urgency from the city's perspective was on this matter. But I think, I think it was just stated that the urgency lies on the developer, that they have closings coming up. I'm assuming the closing isn't a city-related closing. It's the developer that's got a closing. Is that accurate?
I can speak to that, yep. So the closing is tomorrow.
Right.
At 1:00.
It was, do you mind sharing when that closing was originally set, like when you knew that date was coming?
I believe that closing was set for several months ago, and they pushed it back and pushed it back and keep pushing it back. And part of the reason for this change, and especially when you see that open space lot down near, nearest the pump station, we, it has been discovered that there are some natural features running through there, wetlands, as well as a stream running through there. And so it's really just in an effort to preserve those lots. And so this was really an attempt to, in light of those discoveries from several other professionals, we decided to, you know, just kind of shift things up and make it work and still hit that close date. So.
Yeah, I mean, just to, so to be clear on the question I'm asking, I don't, I'm not sure if this is necessarily for you as the applicant representation. It's more so, it's not even a question about the amendments or the changes being made to the lot. My largest concern, very large concern, is what precedent we are setting as a city. As a city, as a citizen, I would be concerned as to why we are calling special meetings, costing the city money. I don't know. Can anybody, any staff tell us roughly hourly rates how much money is being spent on having you all here for this? I imagine it's not a small number. So I'm just wondering why we're, why, where's the urgency? What was the reason that this couldn't wait until March's planning commission? I understand that you have a closing tomorrow. With all due respect, I don't think that's the city's concern. So I'm just, I'm just wondering from a city's perspective, why this couldn't wait. And then the questions for the, I would like to have a response to that before we move forward.
Mr. Chair? Okay, so this is not the applicant asking for something for themselves. This is the community asking for something of the applicant. So the feeling is, it, the applicant being penalized is not fair when he is doing of, you know, what's in the best interest of our community. So the applicant has been, it's been discussed with him to make these changes. It's not fair to him for us to cost him a lot of money on his part because we're wanting him to consider something different that would benefit Mr. McDaniel and the citizens that live on Northwest Highway.
Chair, if I may. Just again, to reiterate, the changes being made is not my concern. I'm just wondering, and that's all, everything that was just stated, I still fail to understand the urgency, like was it a?
She just said it's because he's being punished. She doesn't want him to be punished.
I don't want to go back and forth on this, but.
I think the larger question is.
Do I have a floor or do I not?
Why wasn't this on the agenda last month, two weeks ago? Anybody know? Did it just get resolved? Yes, it just got resolved.
Did the city have anything to do with the timeframe of the closing? We don't, correct?
If I may, and I may be out of turn here, but I think, and I think to the mayor's point is, you know, in conversations back and forth with, you know, the adjacent property owner and on that, that triangular piece, you know, of property, I think it was just recently resolved that, you know, that property was never going to be available, you know, understood rightfully so. And as such, it was just recently, I guess, conceived that a new roadway alignment could be proposed. Does that help, I guess, a little bit, answer the question?
Mr. Chair?
Let me just make sure Mr. McDonald has completed since he was interrupted.
I'm listening to every, whatever thing, and respectfully, I understand what everyone's saying. I agree with a lot of it in regards to what's be, the changes being made and why they're being made. I'm, I just don't understand why it has to happen now outside of the fact that the applicant has a closing tomorrow. And it seems like the city is making special treatment for the individual so he can make his closing instead of taking the time necessary to review these documents. We received the staff report at the meeting tonight. We've had no time to review it. We do not have a full planning commission because it was called outside of the normal monthly meeting. And I'm just wondering why the, why it has, aside from the benefit to the applicant of having, meeting his closing deadline of tomorrow, from a city's perspective, what the urgency was. And all of that's being said, again, the largest concern as I originally presented is precedent. What is this set moving forward? Is it anytime somebody is doing business in the city, has a closing deadline that they need to meet, that they can call a special meeting for that? I'm just, Mr. Carter, I don't know, if you can speak to precedent here, what, what we're, it's just a concern. And if it's an invalid one, I would just love to hear a rebuttal to it.
I'm not really concerned about precedent because I don't think that's really an applicable concept, at least the legal meaning of the word precedent. I'm concerned about process. As all of you know, I'm always concerned about process because if our process is good, I think then we can have reasonable people can disagree about facts and how to apply them. And we can reach decisions that some of us might like and some of us won't like, and citizens may like them or citizens may not. And as long as our process is good, then I don't, I don't think there's a problem there. I think that's what's supposed to happen in government. In this case, I received an email, I believe, Tuesday afternoon from Mr. Greer, setting forth the special called meeting. And then I received a series of phone calls. And so I checked the, our bylaws for our planning commission, which we passed back in July, which, as you remember, the bylaws that Fairview had before that were passed in 2008, hadn't been updated or followed, I think, in a decade or more. So last, early last summer, MTS and myself, Mr. Chuck Downham and myself worked on those bylaws, looked at other communities, looked at ours, looked at other ones that I've drafted. This body met about them, discussed them, we approved them. Those bylaws state that a special called meeting can be called either by a simple majority of the planning commission or by the chair of the meeting, or the chair of the planning commission. In this case, I was informed by Mr. Greer, I believe Wednesday morning, that our typical chair, our usual chair, would not be at the meeting. And I asked Mr. Greer, who was, who was the vice chair, because frankly, I didn't remember. He informed me it was Mr. Magnner. So I asked Mr. Greer to call Mr. Magnner and find out whether he approved having a special called meeting or not. And because I didn't know if we would hear right-of-way, I asked him to also reach out to each of you by email to see if a majority of you approved of a special called meeting. Before I knew what that total was, Mr. Magnner said, okay, let's have a special called meeting. My opinion, my legal opinion, is that's the right thing to do in this case because at that point, we were within 24 hours of a meeting. The special called meeting had already been called. The applicant had been notified that there was a special called meeting. And I don't, I don't think it's fair, once you tell somebody you're going to do something, not to do it. I think it's important to follow through with your word. So in this case, I don't, I don't think the process was great. And I think Mr. Greer is now more informed of what the process should be and how that should be carried out in the future. And so I don't think, I think we're probably wasting a lot of time tonight having this discussion because I don't think this is going to repeat itself in the future because I think everybody's clear now how we call a special called meeting. And so, no, I don't think our process is good. Yes, I think it's right that we're meeting tonight. And I think we need to get on to the debate about discussing this item and make a decision so we can all go home and be with our family on a Thursday night. We're supposed to not be here.
I would concur to that. So since we are here, let's make a point to have this procedural discussion at our next workshop, hopefully here in the very near future. We can clarify and know that as a planning commission, myself and Ms. Senyard can also know better and have more parameters in the future for those details around the request. Ma'am, if you wouldn't mind, please re-approach the podium just in the event. Let's return to specific questions on the project if we can.
I do have a question concerning the project. I just want clarification on the staff comment that, or the staff condition. I just want to make sure that, one, that I'm understanding that we are all understanding it, but also, Mr. McDaniel, the way, the way I understand it, it sounds like there will not be any additional phase final plats or, yeah, final plats for additional phases approved until this intersection is as originally designed? Is that accurate?
The intent of the first condition of approval is to reserve this area that was originally shown, as we all know. No one owns property for forever. We all come and go. And that would reserve that piece of property for the city if anything were to ever change in the future. We could have that piece of property reserved for a significant realignment there if the need came about. Currently, what you see here would be the intersection. But if things changed into the future, that property would be reserved for that alignment there to better align the proposed Northwest Highway with the current Northwest Highway. Can you go forward to the original final plat? So that shows where the, the original final plat had, it kind of came straight across, and now it curves up. So that piece of property there would be reserved as right-of-way for the city for future use.
To clarify additionally on that question, what is the property line in this, in the new updated plat that defines the plat, if you could clarify that?
What is the property line that defines?
Right, is it the?
The eastern boundary?
Is it the easement for the roadway, or is, where is the plat defined on here since we don't see like a meets and bounds description? In other words, sorry, let me, let me clarify, Mr. Greer. As part of the conditional approval, it states that the plat cannot be modified. And if it is, it comes back for planning commission reconsideration. So I'm trying to understand exactly what is the plat, what, where, what's the defining boundary for the plat?
I think if I understand correctly, so this plat, the intention of it is to plat the extents of each of those lots, right? So each of those lots down through there, as well as the open space, as well as to reserve that right-of-way. So that interior section that you see noted as future phase, that is effectively not a part of this plat. It is just noted on there as, you know, in the future that may become, you know, an additional phase.
Thank you. And then any modifications to that right-of-way on that southeast corner at the, I guess that's the utility lot. That's included in this plat, correct?
That is, yes, sir. And so in, in the case that, you know, we bring forth a Phase 2 final plat and anything changes or any of that right-of-way changes, um, or any of that right-of-way changes, there's actually a note on the plat that says that any future flat, uh, future final plats, I'm sorry, um, will void, supersede and vacate effectively this plat. So.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So, just to make sure, one question first, will the plat be filed tomorrow with the closing?
Correct, yes, sir, tomorrow morning.
But you're going to make the change that Ethan has requested to straighten out that line so that that dedicated right-of-way will include the little triangle that was taken out here?
So, in conversations, um, with staff this afternoon, um, that was actually accounted for in a note. And so, a note says that, you know, in, in future phases, um, any change to right-of-way will void, vacate and supersede this plat.
First, the note, what note is it?
It, it, it was written on the plat. I have the hard copies with me today.
But the challenge is, we don't, uh, when you file this plat, the city will have that right-of-way moving forward. We won't have that little triangle.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, is it possible to change that before the filing tomorrow?
It is not.
I mean, yeah, we're kind of back to the same challenge of timing, but, um, I, I knew the answer to that, but had to ask it.
Understood.
I, I think that's important. I think, you know, reserving that extra right-of-way for the city for the future is a critical thing. Because the other thing I would ask staff and, and engineering more particularly is, you know, did we ever do a thoroughfare study? You know, we're trying to balance, and, and I totally get it, we're trying to balance the needs of the local people that live right there as well as the overall community. Part of the idea was to make Northwest Highway a little more of a thoroughfare. That's not great for the people that live right there, but we're adding a stop sign now. Well, you know, is there any concern from an engineering standpoint, one way or the other? Um, or, or a more desirable outcome?
Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but believe that road design was contracted out to T-Squared Engineering? So, they would be the controller in determining what would be appropriately designed. Now, the city has input, of course. Um, and I guess, from my perspective, um, be more desirable to not have a three-way stop because I think the original intent was to have Northwest Highway, like you said, be a thoroughfare, um, to allow traffic to go through quickly, uh, without stopping. So, um, I believe that's why we asked the applicant to, to include the additional right-of-way, um, especially in, in future phases, so that that can be accomplished in the near future.
Yeah, that makes sense, because I, I can see the argument both ways. You know, right now, three-way stop may be better because there's less traffic in the future. Maybe it's better to open it up to more of a thoroughfare. Um, so, I, again, uh, I'm glad that staff added that comment. I, I will say, just to get on the record, I applaud staff working as hard as they did in the last forty-eight hours to answer everybody's questions and, and to make this happen because that was not an easy task because we all had a lot of questions, so.
And, and I'll, I'll note, for, for what it's worth, um, you know, the developer has the full intention of abiding by, you know, the requests and the requirements of the city. So, come phase two, if we need to dedicate that triangle, we're more than willing to do so. It just wasn't feasible on this particular plat.
Well, sorry, one more question. The closing tomorrow, is it, is it the purchase of the land? The, they don't currently own the land, so they're closing on the purchase of that land?
So, the owner, the, the owner is the developer currently, he's selling to a builder.
Okay, so he's selling the lots and then, and the right-of-way, and giving up the right-of-way?
Just the lots.
Just the lots.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions, comments? All right, Ms. Bruce, call the vote, please.
Ms. Schilling? Ms. Williams? Ms. Anderson? Mr. Magnner? Ms. Shulist? Mr. McDonald? Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Thank you, the, uh, resolution passes six to one. Continuing with the agenda, we do not have any bonds or letters of credit to discuss tonight, so we'll go strictly into reports for discussion, additional information, starting with the planning staff. Mr. Greer?
Just a reminder that our March planning commission meeting is moved to March nineteenth. It's not the second Tuesday, it is the third Tuesday of the month due to spring break. We all voted on this a couple of months ago, but just a reminder that it is on March nineteenth, and that's it.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Donery?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, sir. Uh, city engineers?
Nothing tonight, let's go home.
Thank you, Mr. Carter? Okay, um, ending up with the, uh, any planning commission comments, um, and we'll welcome Mr. Pape tonight. Uh, sir, do you have any comments?
Uh, thank you, I just want to say I look forward to serving with you all and I do look forward to a continued discussion on special meetings. I am very much opposed to having any special meetings for any reason other than city business. And I, I think it's a bad, not necessarily legal precedent, but a bad precedent to set. So, I'd like to have that discussion and make sure that this doesn't become a habit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald?
Uh, just welcome Jeff, Mr. Pape, official in business here. It's good to have you, happy to have you here. Um, just a reminder, uh, we do have a town hall here in twenty-five minutes, if there's any interest in that to the handful of people here who want to stick around for it. Uh, other than that, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shulist?
Nothing from me.
Okay, um, down with Mrs. Schilling? Nothing? Ms. Williams?
No, just thank the staff for your due diligence, appreciate it.
Thank you. Mayor Anderson?
Yes. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight and thank the staff for everything they've done in the last forty-eight hours. I do want to reiterate that this was not the, um, app, or the, the developer bringing this. This was concerned citizens who, with possible, you know, there could be, that, there could have been possible litigation on this. Um, I think it was in the best interest of our community, the citizens I spoke with, Mr. McDaniel, and everyone involved, and I appreciate everyone seeing that and voting yes. So, I appreciate this passing also. I will, um, also say, we have a town meeting and I just hope that, you know, um, anyone who wants to stay, I appreciate, um, you know, answering any questions and I'm sure the board does as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have no comments for tonight, so zero motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Good evening.